Okay, all right, we got that. All right, it's six oh one. Let's start with the call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice.
Just as strong.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming. If we were in a room, I'd say we have a room, but now we have, you know, packed screen. We have lots of boxes here to look at today. Anyway, I just want to introduce.
I'll read the preamble.
Yes, please.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, and March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting, the Town of Southampton Select Board, is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to, view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join. Hit Join a Meeting in the top right of the screen. Type in the meeting ID of eight five three seven three zero five zero five three one. Password is nine two seven one one seven. Hit Join, and please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call and telephone number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. Or by watching Public Access TV Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, they'll be right at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, they'll be right at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectman@townofsouthampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy on public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ed, and thanks, everyone, for coming. Welcome to the March 23rd Select Board meeting. As you can see, we don't quite have a forum, so as Ed introduced, we will be discussing, we'll just be discussing items. We're not going to be taking any action on anything until Matt Rowland is able to join us in a little bit. Okay, so let's. Maureen Groden is away, and so I'll be facilitating tonight's meeting. So if you're following the agenda, obviously, we're going to be skipping around because we're going to, anything that requires an action by the committee will push back on the agenda until Matt can join us. So our first item would be public hearings. There are none. Next item is for appointments. We'll wait on following a Select Board reports. So Chris, it's a task. You or me first?
All right, I'll join in. Okay, yeah, a couple of things. Just had a Board of Assessors meeting, pretty much routine business. Nothing out of the ordinary there, the usual abatement requests and things that they're looking at. The Master Plan Implementation Committee, we're waiting on a report, the final report from Ken Kumia from PVPC. And I'm expecting that hopefully within, well, we're almost at the end of the month, so I guess I'm going to say within the week. And with that, we should have a final master plan meeting just to review that, and then we'll probably bring that back before the Select Board. But what I'm hoping for is that we will have a real action plan that the Select Board can put on their agenda for items to tackle. We know that there were several several priority items as voted in by the residents' comments on the survey this past summer, and that will form the basis of a real action plan going forward. Other committees, probably CONCOM is the one that's got the most news. They met on March 15th. And aside from some usual business, just wanted to note that they've had a process working with one of their associate members, Brittany Gudermuth, who has been helping to certify vernal pools in town. And over the past week, thereabouts, I've got notification of three vernal pools that have been certified. A couple on Gilbert Road and one on the Alice Brown Conservation Area, which is great. And people that have vernal pools on their territory, on their land, that would like to get them looked at, should feel free to contact CONCOM. The other thing that's happening is that there had been a monitoring report done up on Wolf Hill. I think as we mentioned, one other meeting, every so often, every number, every certain number of years, our conservation properties need to be monitored and officially reported on. And so Pete Westover of Conservation Works has completed his review of Wolf Hill and basically found the conservation restriction in good shape. There's a few invasives up there, such as the multiflora rose, but nothing terribly bad that is impinging on people's getting up there. There will be, through the Open Space Committee, there'll be a hike organized up there at some point in the next month or so, which I'm sure Cindy will talk about a little bit more. Other things, the Alice Brown Conservation Area, the forestry contract has been out to bid, and with a little luck, we'll be having the bids back within the next couple of weeks, and they should be opened up in public at the next CONCOM meeting in early April, if indeed they are back by then. Secondly, the bidding, the contract has gone out to bid for the Manhattan Meadows work, which was through the grant that was received, the Mass Trails Grant activity there that has got to bid, and hopefully that too will come back in within a couple of weeks. And that would be also opened up in a public meeting, and that will provide for the necessary trail work and things that have to be done to get Manhattan Meadows in a better shape for the townspeople. To add on to that, the Smith Vocational Students, one of the carpentry classes, I believe, has helped assemble, and they've actually made the first bench to be put out at Manhattan Meadows, and so that's been a good practical experience for them, and I believe there's a couple more that they're going to do. So that's been kind of nice to involve the VOC Ed students at Smith Voc to make the benches for the future revived Manhattan Sanctuary. And then, let's see, next, I think, actually Wolf Hill, which is the Alder Pond area, Wolf Hill, known as two different things, I guess, but the same place up on former road. It's going to be a new little project starting up there. Through the CONCOM, Subcommittee has kind of decided they want to do something a little bit more community oriented to get families out exploring our wonderful nature areas in town, and especially do something for little kids to get them more interested in getting out and involved in nature and learning about nature things. So the plan is to do some making of fairy houses, which are very common at various other conservation areas up in Maine. In particular, they have several conservation areas where they have these little little fairy houses, basically, that are made out of local mother nature material and sort of spotted around at various parts on the trail, and it's just a great way for for little kiddos especially to get excited about being out in nature and trying to pretend what fairy is living under what tree, et cetera, et cetera. So there's going to be more coming on that, but there's going to be a Subcommittee organizing a plan to start making these little fairy houses. So watch out, I may be conscripting you, I'm not sure. And I think that's it for those major committees. We'll drop back maybe to the Grant Committee after this, so I'll hush up at the moment and let you go with yours then.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All right. The PQB met in a special meeting on March 18th, which I was unable to attend, but I am reporting from a meeting summary that I received. There were two requests to the PQB to rescore positions. It was the COA Director Position and the Principal Assessor Position. The COA rescore was tabled due to a recusal on the part of one member, which resulted in the lack of a quorum. The Principal Assessor was rescored as an exempt position at a level grade 12, and it's been based on the salary scale. It has a range of 2605 to 3154 per hour. The PQB also approved the carryover of one week's vacation into fiscal year 22 for three Highway Department employees, Randall Kemp, the Highway Superintendent, Todd Jeros, and David Siz. Randall's request for carryover as Department Head was also then approved by the Town Administrator, Ed Gibson. The PQB also updated the 2017 salary scale for non-exempt and exempt non-union employees, which will be added to the next Select Board agenda when we have full participation. The next scheduled PPB meeting is this Thursday, March 25th at 6:00 PM. The Bylaws Committee also met on March 18th, but did not have a quorum for any decision-making, and therefore was just a discussion of agenda items. The meeting has been rescheduled for tomorrow, March 24th at 1:30, which will update the status of pending bylaw drafts, responses from committees and boards to proposed guidelines for committee and board participation, the draft language of a solicitation bylaw, and a proposal to purchase technical assistance that would enable us to to upgrade and maintain the currency of our bylaws. And hopefully, with that investment, we might save some legal costs over the years, but we'll be looking into that tomorrow and coming forward with our ideas at a later date. The Finance Committee, since our last meeting, held two meetings on March 15th and March 22nd, as it continues to meet with Department Heads to review their fiscal year 22 budget proposals. Today, there are only a couple of departments that still have to provide some additional information for the Finance Committee as they consolidate all budget requests and formulate and begin to formulate their proposed budget recommendations. At last night's meeting, there was a thorough presentation of the Hampshire Regional High School Budget, which is predicated for next year on a full in-person participation. The budget proposal shows a 1.13% increase in Southampton's assessment for a little more than $60,000 for the year. The Emergency Management Director also presented the budget request for the department whose expenditures at this time are covered by CARES Act money, which is expected to continue through December 31st of 2021. And then, coming close to the end here, the Board of Health met on the 21st, and I attended this meeting in Maureen's absence. The Board voted to amend its contract with a contact tracing consultant by extending the end date from June 30th to December 31st, when the CARES Act funding is expected to expire. Nicole Fletcher was again appointed as the Animal Inspector. The BOH at its next meeting expects to have a detailed report of its CARE Act expenditures, which is an important an important piece of information for all. And then finally, there was a discussion about possibly applying for a Public Health Excellence Grant in collaboration with other communities that may be used to regionalize some Board of Health Services or to hire a public health nurse or a health agent, among other potential service enhancements. It's not certain definite that they're going for it, but they are seeking more information about the application process. And I'll let you know more when I know more. And they did announce some dates, upcoming dates to remember. One is that as of April 19th, everyone over the age of 16 will be eligible for the COVID vaccine. Important piece of information there. And then on April 24th is Drug Takeback Day, and more information will follow to residents. And finally, the CPC has not met since I last reported, so I think I'm covered. Thank you. All right, that moves then on to our next report, which the Ad Hoc Grants Committee update, and we'll go back to Chris.
Yep, okay. Yeah, we've been meeting weekly, basically, because we're under a deadline right now, basically an April 1st deadline for a submission of expressions of interest in this new grant program from the state that's called the One Stop Grant Program, One Stop for Growth Grant Program. And so we've been convening not only the committee, but calling in various other relevant Department Heads for kind of a brainstorming session. So we've had highway planning, housing, fire, and police represented at our various meetings. And we're coming up with possibly three concepts to push forward and get some feedback on, and those include basically looking at some of the underutilized properties in town that are town-owned properties that might be possible for site surveys and some ideas for affordable housing. Taking a look at where we might think about where we might go next for other ideas for the public safety complex. And then, thirdly, taking a look at some of our possibilities for increased commercial base by having mixed use zoning laws more more in place and looking for places around town where that might be feasible, especially probably up toward the north end of town where our main business district really is. So we're still tossing around some ideas there, but we hope to have three concepts, which is all this is really now, is a concept right up to pitch to the state whereby then they give feedback and say, yeah, we like that idea, or no, this one doesn't make any sense to us, don't even bother applying. But we're hoping that out of the three, there'll be something that they'll say, yeah, this looks interesting, and we'd like you to go ahead and put in the full application. So this is really just a an expression of interest kind of exercise right now, but it's a bit challenging. But we're working hard to meet their deadline of basically April 1st, and then we'll move on to something else until we hear from them. So that's it for right now.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And then on to the Town Administrator Report, Ed.
And actually, before I get into my report, I just want to add on to Chris' report for the Ad Hoc Grant Committee and let you know that we have received two District Local Technical Assistance Awards from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. We did receive a Housing Production Plan Grant in the amount of $15,000, and Jim Senney and Paul Demon will be working with PVPC on that for affordable housing. And then also, we did receive a DLTA Award for a scope award to look at the possibility of a shared HR position for regional human resources with the communities of Chester, West Hampton, and others. And that award is an amount of $22,500. So we will be working with those other communities on that to see if it makes some sense and how we might move forward with a shared HR position between our communities.
Great. That's good news. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now into my Town Administrator's Report. Just to let you know, as Chief Administrator, Administrative Officer under Asht General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, I have declared a snow and ice deficit for this winter of 2021. While we are not in deficit yet, we are getting close to spending both of our snow and ice accounts down to zero. So even though we're at the end of the winter, just to be safe by declaring the snow and ice deficit, if something unexpected does happen between now and the beginning of May, and we were to go into a deficit position, would be able to legally deficit spend for the removal of ice and snow from our Southampton roads and streets through the remainder of this season. Also, to let you know, and I think Francine had touched on this a little bit, that Randall Kemp had requested one week of vacation carryover into the next fiscal year due to the pandemic and the shortness of staff at the Highway Department. The PPB approved his request at their March 18th meeting, and I also have approved his request as his Department Head to meet the PPB Rules and Regulations Regarding his carryover of vacation time. The Southampton Water Department has started their annual water distribution system flushing program for the year. A notice has been placed on the town website, and a code red message is also being sent out. In addition, there is a sign in front of the town hall notifying our residents and water customers that this program has begun for the year. The Conservation Commission's request for bids for the Manhattan Meadow Sanctuary trail restoration and trail work is now available. There will be a pre-bid meeting on Tuesday, April 6th at 11:00 AM at the Manhattan Meadow Sanctuary on East Street with an inclement weather date of Wednesday, April 7th at 11:00 AM at Manhattan Meadows. Bids are due back on April 12th and will be open that evening at the Conservation Commission meeting. There was a pre-construction meeting for the Water Department's Water Main Relocation Project on the Route 10 Manhattan River Bridge last week. This work on this project is expected to start the second or third week of April, and the expected timeline for completion is 90 calendar days and/or 50 working days. One lane for alternating traffic will be kept open on Route 10 at all times while the project is going on. And then Johnson Controls will be here to test the town hall fire sprinkler system tomorrow morning. Their work will be in the basement, and at the first floor fire alarm panel, they will be following all COVID-19 protocols. And then upcoming Select Board meetings for April are the 6th and the 20th. Thank you.
Sorry, Francine, I have one more. I totally forgot. The Ad Hoc Technology Committee is going to be meeting, I believe it's tomorrow evening. They're making headway on various things, especially getting the rollout of the laptops for the folks at Department Heads in Town Hall. So they've got a plan. They're going to be hopefully finalizing tomorrow and starting with with ones that are fairly easy to do without a lot of complicated software, but then getting everybody rolled out within the month. So that's really what they've been working on and making some good progress, I think. So, thanks.
That's good news, and I'm sure it is to all the Department Heads as well. Thanks, Chris. All right, finished with the reports. Next item, Presentations. There are none formal presentations, so we're going to go on to continue our quarterly reports. I'm going to ask Jen Day, Treasurer Collector, to provide us with a quarterly revenue report. Jen? You're muted still.
Okay.
Can you hear?
Okay, sorry. It wouldn't let me unmute myself for a minute there.
Good.
So I'm just basically giving a recap on fiscal year 21 revenue in regard to taxes, from what I understand. Just like. Correct? No?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So I'm going to start with motor vehicle excise. So this year, our largest motor vehicle commitment is normally issued in February and due in March. It's Commitment 1. This year, it was committed for $776,305.95. So far, we have collected over $608,000 of that, so we are right on track as to what we even, I looked at the numbers last year, and it was quite similar. However, last year, the commitment was a larger commitment. So I mean, it just depends on the vehicles, you know, people in town own, and the commitment this year was $30,000 less than fiscal year 20s. So hopefully that estimated revenue amount will catch up with the, will issue seven more commitments throughout the year. So depending on what those are, you know, it could all average out in the end. Any questions on motor vehicle? No?
No. Just a quick question. You just mentioned issuing seven more commitments. Can you just explain that a little bit more?
So with motor vehicle, the main commitment is issued in February. It's Commitment 1. But the Registry of Motor Vehicles issues six to seven more bill files throughout the year. Whenever someone, you know, buys a new car or say, you know, a plate transfers, any change will initiate a new bill, and therefore we get smaller commitments throughout the year. But this is the main one.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
As far as real estate goes, I kind of figured out how much was committed to us to collect through the February payment rather than the whole year. So through February, we should have collected, if all was paid, $9,485,000. Sorry, $9,485,648.84. And we've collected $9,317,369.17.
Good.
We are right on target with that also. As far as personal property goes, we have collected $215,127.47 out of $216,365.99. So there's only like 1,200 uncollected. So I mean, as far as revenue goes tax-wise, we are right on track, even with COVID. So I did, I know Ed wanted some other numbers, so I did get them for him. I'm not sure if he wants them now or.
Sure, if you want, Jen, that'd be great.
Yeah, so you said you wanted ambulance receipts, an idea where those were at. So where did I put it? Well, let's start with transfer station. So transfer station numbers, I just did the accounts for permits, bags, and the tipping fees for when people drop off items. And so far, on the transfer station, they have collected $108,491, and this is through mid-February. And that's totaled. Do you need the separate add between each category or just?
Nope, total is fine.
$108,491 total. And then where did I put ambulance fees? Here it is. Okay. So ambulance fees is through the end of January, and that amount collected is 108,615.70.
Great.
If there are any other accounts that you're wondering about, I can always do a like inquiry as to what I've deposited to let you, to give you a number before numbers are posted. So just the receipts I entered, they're not officially posted by the accountant yet, but if you had any questions on revenue for certain line items, I could quickly get that to you.
Is there anything for the Water Department, Jen?
Um, so I didn't do anything with the Water Department today. I can tell you that I do feel like they're also right on track. We do demand, we issue demands for the Water Department after each quarter of mailing.
Yep.
And those have been pretty consistent, the amounts of demands we issue as to prior years. Also, water bills, all of fiscal year 20 fiscal year 20 usage is leaned. The prior year's usage is always leaned to the actual taxes, the actual real estate taxes. So in October, whatever was due from the prior fiscal year for water usage, we lean to the real estate bills. So unless the property goes into tax title, the water usage fees are normally like always collected by the next year, by the third quarter tax date, because that's when they're leaned onto the bill.
Okay, thanks for that.
But if you need numbers, I can get those. I just didn't print them.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Jen. This is, it's really good news.
Yeah.
We're this far into the year, and we're this close to where we should be, and we still have some time. It's not that we're in arrears. It's just that Mark to collect, and that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's really good. It seems right on target, so. Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have a question here, Jen, from the care of the Finance Committee. Ken, can you unmute yourself? Ken, can you unmute yourself?
I couldn't, I couldn't unmute myself.
Hmm, that's weird.
There he is, you're good now, looks like, Ken.
Hello?
Yes, hear you.
Great, thank you. Jen, I just had a question. As far as how these reflect to what was budgeted.
Yeah.
How does the, the 776 and the 608, for instance, or we can just talk about the real estate, 9485 and 9317, how do those compare to what was in the budget?
Um, I would have to look back at what we put in the budget for, I didn't compare it to what was budgeted, I just compared it to what was actually committed and collected. So I would have to look at what we estimated that revenue to be in the budget line.
Okay.
I'm not even, yeah, but I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you. That was it, that's my question. Thank you, Jen, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So Jen, when you respond to Ken and provided with that information, would you, would you copy the rest of us on that? I would be interested as well.
Yeah, sure, so how it compares from what was actually budgeted, estimated to this, yes.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Any other questions for Jen, anyone? All right, we're moving on to the next item, which is the Revenue and Expenditure Report that was in our packet.
Thanks, Jen.
You're welcome.
All right, any, any questions, issues?
Yeah, I had a few, I'm trying to just find my notes here, sorry.
I mean, I usually have the same questions, and there's usually the ones that are, you know, there's a lag. It shows that we're overspent, and it's only because we didn't have a report of what's come in against some of the items, so from her report, I'm assuming that we're in good shape here.
And I can check some of those, if you need me to.
Okay.
All right, good. So just a couple of things that came as I was looking at, at certain lines because of different expenditures that we have from certain committees such as bylaws. In terms of our legal line, it looks like we've still got about 45% unspent. We've got around a $9,000 balance, which seems healthy right now for three months to go in the fiscal year, but I'm not sure how, how much KP Law may be doing that they haven't, or is on their plate that they haven't billed us for yet. So Ed, do you have any concerns about us running over on our legal line, or are we pretty okay?
I just processed one in this warrant, so that won't be on here. And generally, they're billing one month behind, so, and I'll, I'll say with, you know, basically, they're reviewing the warrant and items for the town meeting. I'd say we're still in decent shape, I don't, wouldn't think we have a lot of extra, but we're in decent shape so far, I would say.
Okay, good. We might, we might see if we can steal a couple more hundred for the bylaws committee. Anyway, and I guess I had a question, and maybe I see Lucy's on here too. For the election registration expenses, I was wondering if that was posted in the right place, or that's really election registration wages? Because it was almost a similar amount, but it's overspent on the expenses and not in the wage line. And I know we had to pay the election workers a salary or something this time around, right? So I was just wondering if that's a misposting, or if that's really true and we're overspent in the registration expenses?
No, that, I think Ed had told you guys last time that I had not had in, I had not had the account to take them out of for COVID, because they were covered by COVID elections, and so he had to do a journal entry, but, you know, a lot of revenue has not been posted, so that's probably why. So I can't explain why it's negative.
Yep, okay.
It would be because you actually charged it to that account rather than the COVID account, so.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's, yeah, I didn't have the, yeah.
Yeah, okay, no, so that'll get turned around at some point then, yeah. Let's see, I guess we have some things, just a couple tech questions, Ed, we had something in the budget for tech equipment, around $4,000 left, and I'm not sure that wasn't the capital item, it was under the tech equipment line. Is there something planned for that? Will that help us with our MS365 or anything else, or?
No, that's, that's pretty well programmed to come out of what we'll be spending on yearly or annual expenses, so that one should be close at the end of the year. I'll keep an eye on it and see if there's anything that is left in it that we can utilize.
All right, good.
I'm looking at the independent audit, have we, there's no expense against it because it hasn't happened yet, but do we have a date?
Yeah, they're, they're doing most of it virtually, so they have sent us the list of items that they want or are looking for, and then at the end of it, they will probably schedule a couple of days of in-house here.
Okay.
Jumping, jumping back and forth, if you don't mind Francine.
No, go right ahead.
Fire truck maintenance, looks like it's quite a bit overspent, $5,700 if I'm reading that right? And I was a little surprised that that wasn't a budgeted item. Or if it is.
But that one has not been, he's been trying to get a historic perspective on that, so we would be able to budget for it traditionally. While he's charged to it to see what he's actually expending in it, that is ideally covered through his fire department expense account.
Okay.
Previously, he just charged it into that because we didn't track maintenance as a separate item, but now we're going to.
The idea, correct.
Okay, okay, yep, all right. And then part of what you had said earlier about the ice and snow deficit, is that different from the winter roads line?
Well, no, it's made up of two different items. Basically, the winter roads expenses, which is in a deficit, and then winter roads wages, which at this point in time is still in a positive.
Gotcha, okay.
So when, basically, either when both go negative or when one goes negative and the other one still has a positive amount, but it's less than the other negative amount, at that point, we're in a deficit.
Yep.
And like, like I say, Randall, I knew one was in a deficit, Randall brought it to my attention just in case something odd does happen in the next few weeks. By declaring the snow and ice deficit, we can legally proceed and deficit spend in those two accounts. If, if nothing happens, we're, we're fine, but I'd, I'd rather be safe than sorry, because you never know when one of these strange big snowstorms or ice storms comes up, so.
Right, right. I've got about three or four more Francine, if you don't mind. Okay, and they're just ones that I just come to my attention, I don't know enough about them to know whether that's good or bad, so. Vocational transport, I guess, doesn't look like we've spent much, obviously, because of the school situation. So we have about, look, almost like $56,000, $57,000 left in that line, which maybe will be used to cover some other expenses they have at some point in time, but I can't imagine they're planning on drawing down too much of that between now and June.
Yeah, and it, it may be that they just haven't charged everything to it that they've gotten invoiced at this point, too, so.
Yeah, that's true, sometimes we don't get the school stuff right away, that's true, okay, could be, yeah.
I mean, so far, it looks good, but.
Yeah, they're not overspent by any means, it's just, no, okay. And I know Parks Committee has a, Commission has a meeting this coming week. I was going to remind one of their members that they've got a $2,000 budget line, and they've spent only $16 so far. I think they could do maybe a little bit of spending, because the signage they put up, the COVID signage, came out of the COVID money, the CARES Act money. So I'm not sure what their plans are, but they may be forgetting that they actually have some money to spend there.
Well, they may be also hoping that with the lessening of COVID-19 restrictions that, you know, soccer and baseball are going to participate, and they might need some of that to open up the fields, fertilize, turn on the water, and what have you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I saw the little kiddos out playing over the weekend at Conant Park, so that's probably true. Let's see, I think two others, so there are a couple of things that I just don't know enough about to even be halfway intelligent about, but there are some intergovernment expenses, and I was just wondering when those get, when those occur. They are the RMV surcharge and the regional transit lines, and I'm just wondering what those are all about and when we usually see those appear as something of an expense.
I'll have to go back and look and find out for you. Usually, usually those come from the cherry sheet, but I'll take a look at the past years and see when they've actually occurred and let you know.
All right, and my last one is just what the prior year encumbered expense means. The, there's about $37,000 left in that, and I was just trying to understand what that really related to.
Usually, usually that is, well, I was gonna say usually, that is items that basically in June, the departments will report what they have expended but not been invoiced for. And that becomes encumbered to the previous fiscal year. So I'll have to go back and take a look and see why that's so high.
Okay.
Usually, but, yeah, and it could be one item that somebody encumbered, and then it didn't get delivered or whatever, but I will find out.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, that's pretty, pretty thorough, thank you. All right, any other questions on the expenditures from anyone out there? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Francine. More or less a logistical question, I guess. Now, you refer to information packages?
Yes.
Are those sent out to email, or how are those available?
Yes, you should have, the Finance Committee, don't they usually get the?
Well, that was going to be my next question, what's the, what is the date of that report?
This one is dated March 11th.
Okay, so that would have been after our last meeting.
Right.
So I guess the concern that I would have is that if we, you know, if we have a Finance Committee member in attendance, and everybody's reviewing these numbers, Finance Committee hasn't had a chance to see them. And so we're not able to give, you know, provide any input, obviously, because we haven't seen the numbers. Is there any way that Finance Committee can receive these reports?
You should be getting them.
Yeah.
You should, you should be included in the departmental email that goes out.
To where? To Finance Committee?
To the fincom@townofsouthampton.org.
That's news to me, sorry, maybe it's, maybe it goes to Mary.
Everybody should be able to access it.
Ken, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I've sent you about maybe three emails just in response to questions you've asked before to that FinCom email, have you received any of those?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, you have, okay. I was just wondering, because I've never received a reply, and I, so I wasn't sure. But, so I just wanted to make sure that where I was emailing was at least correct.
Well, what were the emails about?
It was, so one was for informa, um, reports that were requested, revenue reports. When we first met with Finance, me, and Regina, and Ed, I'll met. And revenue reports were requested, I sent those. And then, it was just requests, and I don't remember the other couple, but.
It looks like we should look into the FinCom email account to make sure the people know how to access it. And if it's put out to the individual members as well.
Right.
Well, it's, it's like I say, it's forwarded to all of their emails, so. Let me take a look, and I'll send them, I'll send them a test message.
Okay.
When you say, so you're talking about personal emails?
Yes.
So the, the expense report that you send out to Select Board also goes out to the heads of departments and relevant committees that have something to report, right? I mean, something expensed, right, Ed? I mean, that's.
Right, it goes to all the departments.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll, I'll double check and make, make sure that is being forwarded to that, too.
Well, we get the reports, but they come in the form of our Finance Committee package, which I'm assuming comes from Mary.
Okay, yeah, let me check on it for you.
Yeah, yeah, Mary may be accessing the email and then reproducing it and sending it out to everyone. Because we just got this, we just got this information yesterday.
Right.
Just so you know, okay. All right, thank you, anything else? Okay, continuing with old business, the next item is the Town Caucus. An update on that, we determined at our previous meeting and with approval from the Legislature, that we will not have a Town Caucus this year. That was the decision of the, that was the request and the decision of the group, and we did hear back from, from the state on it. The next item in old business is the Assistant Accountant position, can you give us an update, Ed?
Yeah, we still haven't, we've only received a couple of applications and resumes, so that is going fairly slow, so we might have to see if there are some other avenues of getting the message out and advertising that are not very expensive.
And I thought, did you post it with Indeed yet, or?
No, I have to transfer some monies to do that, so I'll get it on Indeed this week.
We, we need, yes, yeah, because maybe we can get some of this revenue posted once Regina can, you know, stop tracking all the, all the, all the payables. Okay, yeah, she needs help, thank you. Okay, there's some news on the East Street Bridge, Ed?
Yes, the public comment, period for the comments for our waterways license closed last week on the 17th, so VHB is expecting that we will actually get our waterways license this, sometime this week, they have the bid documents fairly ready to go. Once they have that get out, the only thing I would have to do is work with them to align the bid return coming back so that it can be opened that evening at a Select Board meeting. So I, for, for now, we've got our April meetings planned. I'm guessing it'll probably be maybe the first meeting in May, but I'm just gonna plan tentatively for the bid documents and the dates to use that first meeting, one of the May meetings to have the bids be due back and to be opened. And then if for any reason that Select Board meeting has to be changed, we can actually do an addendum to the bid to change when they're due back and when they're going to be open.
Okay, I, I'll speak for myself here and say, I would be willing to have an extra meeting if we can get this done, whenever, at the simplest possible way. Okay, so then potentially, once the bids come in and our, and the contract is awarded, what's the timeframe in terms of when this project can begin?
That really depends on who the successful qualified bidder is and when they can start.
Okay, are we going to ask that question as part of the bid?
We did not ask that question as part of that bid, I suppose we can, actually, it hasn't gone out yet, so I can see what we can, we can do as far as that goes. I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant. we can do as far as that goes. I'm a little bit hesitant to always put start dates in only because of the fact that sometimes it drives up the bid price, but I'll see what we can work out.
Maybe we, maybe we could ask something more generic, though, in terms of their availability, you know, within a certain window or something, because, you know, you may get somebody who's qualified that is a good bidder, but they're so jammed up with other work, they won't get to us for another six months, so.
Right, exactly.
If there's any way we can sort of narrow that down a little bit and know that, that would be helpful, probably.
Yeah, I think we need to set some realistic expectations, and that's an important factor.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Next item under old business is the bylaw amendment review. We talked about Chris, you know, raised it, that we were allocated six hundred, bylaws committee was allocated six hundred dollars out of the, our legal expense line. And we asked Ed to check with KP Law, what would six hundred dollars do for eight bylaws that we have with them? And Ed, you wanna give us the answer there?
Yeah, Town Council estimated that they expect that they can do the first three of those eight for the six hundred dollars. And if they get further, they will. And I also asked them for what they thought the estimate for the remainder five would be, and their ballpark estimate was probably around another fourteen hundred dollars.
Two thousand dollars. Wow. All right, the bylaws committee is going to meet tomorrow, and we really do want to discuss putting some, putting the first three in some kind of priority order. I know you and I talked, Ed, about it being, you know, the sequence of the numbers of the articles, but we'll see how it plays out. Once we meet, then we set our priorities. They may be one and the same, and then again, they may not be, and we'll have to come up with something. And then I guess we need to understand what is the potential for this additional fourteen hundred dollars. You know, is it realistic or not for this year?
Gotcha.
Okay. All right, um, next item is the amendment to the wetlands protection bylaw. And I'm gonna turn that one over to Chris, who works very closely with Conservation Commission.
Yeah, thanks. We had a discussion about this at our last CONCOM meeting because there had been a couple of comments back from the Attorney General about the, um, the fee, sorry, the fine that was going to be put into the, um, into the bylaw, whether it fit in the bylaw or elsewhere as a separate fee slash fine schedule, and the Attorney General determined that it couldn't be a fee, it's really a fine or a penalty. And so they're recommending that that actually be put into the body of the wetlands bylaw itself that was passed at the last town meeting. So this will be an amendment for the next town meeting to include that. And if you recall, Select Board had agreed to approve what CONCOM had recommended, which was a fine of three hundred dollars per day per offense. And so we verified that again, Ed did, with KP Law, and they are in agreement with that. So that's one piece of the amendment that just would be, that would be the amendment, essentially. And then there was one other thing where I believe in the original language of the bylaw passed at the last town, special town meeting, there was a sentence about the town is entitled to recoup all, all legal fees incurred or something along that line, and the Attorney General felt that that was way too broad, which we, upon second thought, kind of agreed that it probably was. And so one of the things that CONCOM recommended was to just put in one thing that they would like to not have to pay out of the CONCOM budget, which is essentially the fee for recording an enforcement order with the Registry of Deeds. And this is one, I haven't had a chance to talk to Ed about this, but we'd like to shoot that one back at KP Law. They didn't think that that was appropriate, but it was unclear from their answer whether they thought that the CONCOM shouldn't be filing that at the registry and somebody else should be doing it, or that they didn't believe that this should be something filed at the registry at all. And so that's a little bit confusing because CONCOM has had occasion, probably three or four that I'm aware of, that they have filed an enforcement order with the Registry of Deeds, and the reason for that is that the enforcement order goes with the property, not with the person. And so normally, I guess just to be back up and be a little bit clear, enforcement orders are not, not all that common, I guess I would say, with, with CONCOM. Usually if there's some sort of violation of the wetlands regulations, CONCOM is aware of that. They start having a dialogue with the landowner, with the homeowner, and figure out what needs to be done. Sometimes it's, you know, doing some more erosion control, it may be not working so close to the buffer zone, it may be planting native species, putting in some big boulders, whatever it may mean. CONCOM and the landowners usually work this out, but there are times where the landowner has very little interest in cooperating, and that's when an enforcement order would be actually issued. And because it does not go with the person, it goes with the property, it does get filed, and this is per DEP, DEP regulation. So it's a, it's a form that they have put out that needs to be filed and is registered at the Registry of Deeds. And then that allows, obviously, for the fine to be collected. So the, the importance there is, is that, you know, you could have somebody who did not want to cooperate with or agree with the CONCOM's findings about a wetland violation, and then at some point in time, go ahead and sell their property. The next property owner would have no idea that there was an issue unless there was something recorded along with the deed. So we remain pretty strong in our thinking that this needs to be a recording at the registry. And so we'd like to shoot that back at KP Law to help have them understand better what we're doing. And we don't think it's anything different than many other towns do. So that's the one on that. But I think we have time. I'm hoping to get that answered and turned around so that we'll still get it on the warrant. We really do need it on the warrant for this coming town meeting. So I don't want to do anything to delay that, but I'm thinking that we can get a turnaround, hopefully by our next select board meeting, and that still is in time for when we're preparing the warrant. So we're fine with one of the points, and we definitely have a question on the second one in terms of that, that specific, specific fee that we think the town should be able to recoup from somebody who's violated the bylaw. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anybody have questions for Chris? All right, that was, that was good. Thank you, Chris. All right, the next item is an update on our, we had a question about the status of the quote on the short and long-term disability proposal that we received from the insurance carrier. Ed, I know you spoke with them, they gave you?
Yes, that proposal will expire on April fourteenth. And Jim Russell told me that that you usually, even if they expire unless something really unusual happens in our pool of demographics for the eligible employees, like, you know, there were two or three people that were age sixty-nine that have turned seventy, you know, or if we had, you know, like four people in the pool that maybe were forty years old that left here, and we filled those four vacant positions with people that were sixty, that that might change the, the actual cost part of the proposal. But he did say that, you know, tho- those type of things are fairly unusual or not highly probable.
Okay.
Okay.
But once.
Okay, go ahead. Yep.
But, but once we, if we were to agree to this on or about April fourteenth for the quote that they gave us, and if any of those demographics change in this three-year period, that we're, they're still held to the, to the quote that they gave us. Is that correct?
Well, if we accepted it and started it before April fourteenth, even if those demographics changed after that, they'd be held to them, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's, let's be sure this is on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, because honestly, when we got the information from Jen about the costs over the last several years, they were a lot different than I think I believed or was told that they were. So it, it, it really, it's, it's averaging about what the premium would be based on the quote that they gave us. So that's worth a consideration again to look at. All right, the next, we're up to new business section now, and the next couple of ones, if I go through here quickly, all require votes. So we're just gonna skip over until Matt is able to join us. So just bear with me while I look through this and make sure I don't skip anything in the meantime. But the zone change application is a vote, and your town meeting is a vote. The early voting by mail is a vote, the national wildlife is a vote. Um, so that brings us up to an update on the covid. If everybody's following with me, you agree with me, then the next item would be the covid nineteen update. So I'm gonna turn to Ed again.
Yeah, and as, as you are, I'm sure you're aware that with the weekly DPH report that was released last Thursday, Southampton did drop down from the yellow cautionary color due to the number of average weekly positive or bi-weekly positives we had in a fourteen-day period. And we're back down into the green section now. So that is very good news. We had gone, finally gotten out of the red and gone to the yellow. We were in the yellow for about two weeks. And now we're down into the greens. So hopefully in another week or two, we will drop down into the lowest category, which will be the gray category. You know, it's, Jerry reported that the vaccine supply in Massachusetts is still low, at least for this week. So that is making it harder for people that are trying to, they're eligible and trying to schedule their first vaccine shots. Uh, let's see, everything is normal and everyone's healthy in both the fire and police departments. Our DPW employees have become eligible for getting their shots, and either most of them have their shots or are now scheduled for them. Don Snyder, our Emergency Management Director, had distributed the the PPE supplies from MEMA that we had ordered, so those came about a week ago. And we got actually more than, we're able to get more than we ordered, so that was great. We're a real good position as far as that goes. And, you know, as of Monday, we're starting into what is phase four, so restaurants are increasing their capacity. We're into a period where venues, like sporting venues that seat larger than five thousand people can have twelve percent of their capacity at this point in time. They, they are still working on, shall we say, the rules and regulations for venues that are smaller than five thousand. But in, in general, the Massachusetts reopening plan is definitely progressing. And now on the cautionary side, you know, the, the positive rates both in Europe and South America are starting to have another blip in them and increasing significantly. You know, so the CDC is putting out some cautionary, precautionary warnings here that traditionally probably three to five weeks after those surges have happened in the past in like Europe, that we've seen the same thing here in the United States. So hopefully everybody will stay smart, wear their masks, keep on social distancing, and our numbers will stay low and we won't see another surge.
Yeah. Ed, just a quick question, the, the kinds of things that we got from MEMA this time around, is it more masks and gowns kind of thing, or what did we get for?
We got masks, gowns, sanitizer, thermometers, stethoscopes. We got, we did receive some, I will say, portable cardboard sanitizing dispensers that we would be able to use it like for town elections, town meetings, and, and so forth. You know, that you refill with a gallon jug, so we got some good things.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Okay.
Good. All right, thank you. Thanks, Ed. The next one, coming right back at you, Ed, on the, an update on the CARES Act?
Uh, still not a lot going on with the CARES Act. We are in a period through June thirtieth where we can basically reprogram some of our approved spending. So if someone's got, had an approval for something and they know, are no, no longer going to need that, we would be able to take that, those funds, report them, and ask to have that transferred into a, another item that is eligible under the CARES Act, and be able to utilize it that way.
Yeah. And I, I had said I haven't had time, but I had said that I would work with Ed and, and kind of take a look at the expenses that have been filed so far. As he had mentioned, I think through the, one of our last reports, anyway, a lot of the things that had been reported back to the state were through the December period, and we had had some expenses then, but our really heavy expenses were for a lot of the equipment and things that were ordered in the second round especially. And so a lot of that has occurred now. I believe just about every department, as far as I know, has gotten just about all the stuff that they ordered. And so we will have a lot of expenses during this January to March period. So I was gonna try and sit down with, with Ed and/or Ed and Regina and try to just see if we can get our department-by-department list together so that we can let them know for sure how much money they might still have left. I know there's some that haven't quite spent up to their total. Or there are definitely some that chose to not get what they had originally thought because it's no longer necessary or, or whatever. So we'll see if we can make some headway on that over the next couple of weeks, get people some clarity with that. As we had broken, it's, just to say that, you know, we, we, everything gets kind of reported on a big lump thing with a few categories to the state, but internally, Ed and I broke things down, you know, really more granularly, guest department by department, so.
Well, that makes sense, and it's good to hear that people are getting the things that, that they want and the things that they need. Good, thank you. Yeah, I look forward to that report because, yeah, the last thing is, you don't wanna overspend, but you also don't wanna underspend, so if there's money available, we should be using it. Okay. Thank you, Ed and Chris. All right, the update on the Open Space and Recreation Plan, anything?
Yeah, I had a good meeting with Ken. We went over most of, just about all of the comments that were received. He has incorporated those into the Open Space and Recreation Plan update. There is one set of comments that I'm just clarifying with him to make sure that they are incorporated. And once he's got those, he's gonna send me an updated, shall we say, an updated final draft or an updated, updated final version to be able to send out to the committee. And there is one particular chart that needs to be completed that wasn't before. It's not very long, so I will send that out to the committee also and see if the committee members can help us fill it in. And once that's done, they'll send that final version back off to the state and we'll be all set.
Okay, so then that makes us eligible for grant monies once they approve it, is that correct?
Yeah, and actually, from what I've been told, that just the fact that they've got, have the final the draft version in there. the, the draft version in there, and have accepted the draft, that uh we would still be eligible for those grants.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's technically been approved, right? It's just that they're, they need the final touches put on it.
Right, exactly.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, I see Matt is with us, welcome Matt. We'll give you a few minutes to catch up and we'll just continue uh with the rest of the uh regular items and then we'll come back, circle back and do all the, all the items that need a vote to move on, okay? All right, thanks Ed on the open space. Next one is the hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah, and uh we've got uh some dates that I'll be sending out to see people's availability. It's the first Wednesday and Thursday in April.
Okay. The thing in April. All right.
So it'd be the April, well, that'd be March thirty first and April first, or?
Hmm, no.
The following week.
Following week?
Following, following week.
Following week.
Seventh and eighth?
Yeah. Good. Okay, next standing item, uh, well, not standing, but one we're interested to hear about, uh the FY twenty-two budget updated.
Yes, and uh we've been working with the uh, the finance committee to go through uh the budget requests of the departments. And I've been also on working the last week trying to put together uh a solid revenue estimate for fiscal year twenty-two right now. Uh and I've got to confirm a couple of numbers, but right now uh it looks like we'll be somewhere around uh five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues over what we had available in fiscal year uh twenty-one. So um, like I say, I will double check a couple of those figures just to make sure they're, they're accurate. And I should be finalizing the revenue side in the, in the next week.
Yeah. Because, you know, the, any, any recommendations that the finance committee would always have to be predicated on what do we have in the bank before we tell people they can spend it, so to speak.
Exactly, and, and uh, you know, the uh, the federal government has, you know, approved the American uh Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. And it's, it looks like Southampton is eligible for one point eight million dollars out of that. Which from what I'm gathering would be given to us over two fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-three and that we'd have up to four fiscal years to spend it. However, they don't give us a lot of information on, shall we say, what is going to be eligible to spend it on uh from, from that plan. And you read it and it, you know, it, it, it sounds fairly good. And, and then you read some of the fine print and uh one of the things that I noticed is that they are actually, uh while they haven't fully written the rules and regulations for it yet, they're pointing us back at the uh rules and regulations for the CARES Act. So um I, I have an idea that it's not going to be just carte blanche and you can use it for anything. Uh I think it is still going to be, to some extent, uh COVID nineteen expense required, generated. But at this point in time, um, you know, frustrating as it is, there's uh really not much information on what we will be able to use it for, which, yeah, you know, it would, it would be nice to know that if we, you know, what portion of it uh might we be able to utilize, if anything, for no, non-COVID expenses in our fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Okay, all right. We'll have to figure it out.
Yeah, that was some of, that was some of the trouble we had with the CARES Act money too, is that we couldn't use it for things that were already normally budgeted. So I would assume that would carry through with this one too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, and I've, I've heard different things, that, you know, I've heard that the um communities, towns or cities would be able to use it to fill in any uh revenue gaps that they've seen from, you know, COVID nineteen uh and whatever. But like I say, it's drips and drabs and I know the state hasn't received much information from uh some of the uh conference calls that I've been on, uh the Department of Revenue and Administration of Finance is still looking for direction from uh, you know, the fed- federal government on, okay, you know, they've said that the numbers seem to be pretty, pretty darn close to what communities can expect to receive. But uh, like I say, no rules and regulations on exactly how it can be utilized and what it can be spent on.
Okay, now then, there's lots of, lots of places we can figure it to go, it's just whether or not they, they're qualified for that. But, all right, thank you on, on that and, and we'll get the firm number?
Yeah, and like, like I say, even if it's before the next meeting, I'll send it out to you.
That would, I think that would be very helpful as people start to look through and make some decisions, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Francine?
Yeah.
Can I just say something? There is information on the Mass Municipal Association's website. There is a link there that shows how much money each municipality is going to get. And there's information about the blocks of when it is going to be provided. There are two blocks, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, and it'll be available for you through twenty twenty-four. But the Treasury Department um is going to, you know, provide specific guidelines, but there is information on the Mass Municipal Association's website.
That's what I just said, Lucy, but there's no information on how it can be spent.
Right.
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 I know that, but
Yeah.
you, you didn't say which blocks, it's twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
No, he said it would be available for two years.
Yeah, he said for the next two fiscal years through twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so we got that, thank you. All right, next item would be the um update on East Hampton Media and the board. We had uh Robert uh communicated his, his uh resignation from the board due to the term limit. And um we subsequently received some information, they are looking to increase the representation from Southampton. And if I am correct, is they were asking that the select board um nominate an individual to serve on the board as well as the uh school committee, so that the interest of the town and the school in the utilization of the uh resources available through East Hampton Media um could be maximized, correct?
That's correct. Got this, a uh, the bylaws uh will allow up to nine members of the board of directors. And uh there are four sets of appointments, uh one by the mayor of East Hampton, one by the school committee of East Hampton, one by the select board of the town of Southampton and one by the school committee of the town of Southampton.
And that would leave then five at large for other people who would volunteer.
Correct.
To be on it, okay? And I, and I had asked Ed in terms of people's backgrounds, are they looking for people who are more creative or more technical in, in this? So Jen pops in, okay, Jen?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Ramsey, yes.
Yes, okay, Jen Ramsey, East Hampton Media, I'm the executive director. Um, I work with our board of directors on big picture items um and uh strengthening our organization. So we currently have three openings on our board of directors that we're recruiting for. You can certainly appoint someone, but the, the knowledge and experience we're looking for is not necessarily video or TV production, that falls under like our programs. We're looking for strong leaders who have nonprofit experience um or who have finance, fundraising, development, legal knowledge, marketing and media strategy. So we're looking for people who have kind of um nonprofit leadership experience to help us grow and sustain our organization.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, so Jen, are the, are the three, are the three positions you're talking about, they're including the appointed ones or they're the at-large ones only?
I'm not sure, you'd have to contact our board uh president, who is Erica Ann Flood. She can give you more details on that.
Yeah, and just to say, I, I put it out to the uh ad hoc tech committee just so that they were aware of it, I don't know if anybody's
Yeah.
Interested or not.
We had two people reach out and ask questions, so I hope that one of them steps up.
Okay.
Really great to have someone from the ad hoc tech committee.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and is there a deadline when?
No, it's rolling right now, um we have the three openings right now, so you know, it's kind of a rolling deadline. So um as soon as you, if anyone is interested, just get in touch with our board president, uh president@easthamptonmedia.org or you can visit our website, there's a button on there that says uh Board of Directors.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is there any, we're at the point now, any other business that cannot wait until the next regular meeting? Okay, so we're going to come to the signatures, we have no personnel or, or change forms and no personnel requisition forms, so we're done. We have nothing on licenses or permits. Let's move to Chris on the warrants and then we're going to circle back to those items that required voting and discussion, so.
Okay, we have um three warrants uh this meeting, uh vendor payable warrant, W twenty-one thirty-seven in the amount of six hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventeen cents. A payroll warrant, P twenty-one thirty-eight in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. And a payroll deduction warrant, PD twenty-one thirty-eight in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay, um just to figure out the, fill out the rest of the um agenda here, the other items. We'll, we'll circle back and do, do the minutes when we do the, all, all the other voted items. Pending items, the Green Community Grant, updated, anything?
No, nothing on the pending items.
Okay, so all of those will just, will just go by? All right. Any, anything anyone add? Okay, all right, now we're going to go, go back, what would have been the first item that we would have voted on. And it comes under uh appointments and resignations. We have in our our packet, we have um two requests for appointments, one from the building commissioner to appoint Tom Quinlan as an alternate building commissioner with a term that will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, so just for the next couple of months. We have an application uh from Kim Florrick, she is the um technology director for Hampshire Regional School District to become a member of the ad hoc technology committee, I think that's a, that's a, that's an important role and relationship for her to have. Uh that term would expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And then we have to make an appointment of uh Regina Gillis, our interim uh town accountant um until June fifteenth twenty twenty-one. Well, this position is paid through a vendor warrant, we do need to name Regina as the statutory authority as the interim town accountant, correct Ed?
Correct, and this would be a reappointment for a second twelve-week term.
Okay. All right, do you want to entertain them individually or uh let's go through them? Each one or vote collectively? Now that Matt's here. Any questions, discussions on any of it?
I'm okay to vote collectively if we can, just to
Okay.
move things forward, I mean, I don't.
All right. I need a motion then?
Okay, let's see, okay, uh I'll make a motion to do the appointment of the alternate building inspector, the uh candidate for the ad hoc technology committee and a reappointment of the interim town accountant. Per the periods that you suggested, they're all short-term, I believe it'll be, the ad hoc, ad hoc one went until twenty twenty-three, I remember, right?
Right, that's the only one. Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right, any more discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor?
Falsi?
Rolando.
Ben Tishman eye, good. Okay, the next.
Can I just ask, can I ask a question? Can I just ask, does this mean with um Regina being appointed as the interim town accountant, is this still going to be through Johnson and Hill? Or is she actually being appointed by the town as an employee?
Vendor, Johnson and Hill.
So it's still vendor, so she's really not being appointed, we're just paying her through the vendor.
Right, but she has to be actually appointed to have the statutory authority for the signing and whatever.
Okay, I was just wondering, thank you.
Good question, Jen.
Yeah, I guess I didn't make that clear, but that's what I was trying to convey to people.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, the uh next item on the agenda for voting is the approval to forward the zone change application request for properties located at one seventy-three and one seventy-five College Highway on behalf of American Dream Realty to the planning board for consideration and scheduling a hearing to rezone these properties from residential village to commercial village. Just to be clear about tonight's vote, that we take tonight on this application is only to refer this matter to the planning board for their consideration. It is not a vote by the select board to approve the zoning change, just to be explicit.
Yes, and that's, and what you just said, Francine, like so moved, I mean, not, the, the, the latter explanation we can remove from the motion, but basically to move this forward to the planning board, I move to do that.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All right, those in favor?
Falsi.
All right, and Tishman eye, good, unanimous, thank you. Okay, now, we're looking at the um, the town meeting dates. You know that our moderator advised against indoor meetings and recommended dates in June to ensure that we could have outdoor meetings in good weather. So the dates that were recommended were June twelfth with the rain date of June nineteenth. Anything you want to add to that, Robert?
Yes, um just to review, uh May twenty-ninth, Saturday, Memorial Day weekend, June fifth, Saturday, Hampshire Regional High School graduation, not so much for the graduation, but more strategic planning. We get a plague of locusts, we need an emergency place to hold a meeting. We are allowed by our bylaw to go to Hampshire Regional High School Field, a parking lot, though I'd like to, for all those reasons, keep it open. So we're looking at uh June twelfth uh Saturday for the annual meeting and it being, it being rainy, full rain, Ed's call, uh we can simply adjourn to the next day, Sunday, June thirteenth. I've hitched this to um having Lucy's back for the town election to ensure that her town election is in June and doesn't jump into July and flirt with the, you know, um July fourth celebrations. So what it means is that the warrant needs to be posted on May twenty-eighth. You do not meet normally um on May twenty-fifth, you meet on May eighteenth. So you would need to sign the warrant on May eighteenth.
I would like to speak, please, Francine, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, Lucy.
I am not in favor of changing the town meeting or the town election for May. There is no reason to change it. We had five elections last year, three of them during the height of COVID, when our town was, and our state was in the height of it. We did it safely, we did it efficiently, effectively. And we had two town meetings that were done effectively. One was done in August. One was done in August during the heat, people survived. One was done, done during October. It was chilly, but we still had it. It was a little windy, but we still had it. I did a little history of the town meetings. And for the past 10 years, in 2011, the annual town meeting was May 7th, we had 132 voters. In 2012, we had 99 voters. In 2013, we had 75 voters. 2014, we had a quorum was met, so that was all that was in the minutes. 2015, we had 200, 262. 2016, we had 165. 2014, we had 244. 2019, we had 171. 20, uh, going back, 2018, we had 336. And I believe in 2018, that was because we were doing the override. So I feel that we can still effectively have a town meeting in May. And so I am completely against changing it. It is going to be too close to the end of the fiscal year. And I just need to know, is there another reason why this needs to be changed besides COVID?
I don't disagree with anything that Lucy's saying.
I, we went on the advice and the recommendation of the moderator, who is the person who is charged with determining the meeting dates.
And not to be argumentative, because I don't, because I don't know, just hold on a second, Lucy.
Yeah.
I'll, I'm always willing to admit that I don't necessarily know the rules here. So somebody can educate me on the rules, but I'm going to need to be shown the rules, but like, I mean, we've done town meetings in COVID. I'm not really sure why we can't do this in May. I mean, it's, COVID's not the reason to not have a town meeting. We've clearly done that several times.
And elections.
Why can't we do this at a regular time in May? We're doing it outdoors. We're not doing anything differently than we've done before.
I also talked to the Board of Health. And in two weeks, three weeks, we could be in the gray. And if we're in the gray zone, we can have a town meeting outside. There is, um, people are getting vaccinated. And, you know, we can have 150 people outside. That number may go up. So, you know, Robert and I talked, but and he mentioned June 12th, but that was today. I have not been communicated with, by anybody before this. And I know that it was brought up a couple of weeks ago, and Tammy had mentioned, I remember at the end of the meeting, graduations, weddings, you know, events. So my vote is to not change it. I don't know how, I know I don't have a vote, but my comment is to not change it. You know, the town meeting cannot conduct its business without the moderator or a town clerk or the voters. So
End the warrant.
End the warrant.
I mean, I don't, just to chime in, I don't know that we can be ready for the original date of May 8th. I think that's creeping up on us quickly to get a warrant together and keeping Memorial Day.
It was, it was May 4th.
I'm maybe looking at the wrong one, but we'd end up doing it on a Saturday if we're doing it outdoors, right? In order to get as many people as possible. So May, May 8th would have been that Saturday, but then keeping Memorial Day weekend in mind, et cetera. You know, May 22nd would be maybe the alternative date to propose. Unless somebody can think of something else there, that would be still, I think, give us enough time to be sure that we've got everything we need to on the warrant and get the warrant ready.
But can I please, why the is not ready? I mean, is it budget issue?
People haven't figured out what we want to put on the warrant. We've still got bylaws. We've got lots of things to do on the warrant.
Budget stuff, too.
Well, that's what I'm asking, the budget. But if COVID wasn't around, we'd have to have this warrant ready for May 4th.
We, we do. We've gotten the extension by the legislature, right?
I know.
Elections until the end of June, so.
But we just got that last week. We just got it last week.
Lucy, we did. Okay, let's go back to Robert. Robert is the person.
My suggestion, my suggestion is to find a compromise here. I do think that late in June is late pushing up against a fiscal year, when you've got to have an election at the same time after the town meeting. So my thought would be to have a town meeting on May 22nd would be in between any kind of holiday. It's a busy time coming up on weekends, for sure. But maybe before Memorial Day weekend, that would not be a bad time to have the town meeting.
Okay, the one thing I didn't discuss, I mean, I mentioned the dates of the annual town meeting being the 12th and, and or 13th with the rain date of the 19th, but that, that may be resolved doing it the 12th and the 13th. The other one was the date for the election. We could still get it in June by doing it Tuesday, June 22nd, or Tuesday, June 29th. Just to put it out there and to put the whole package together. Robert?
I agree with Matt, agreeing with most of what Lucy shared. If the May 22nd date was to be considered, I'm sorry for smiling, you would need to sign the warrant on May 4th. And I not hearing that you all are ready or could be ready to sign the warrant on May 4th. We collectively agree, I believe, that we wait to the last minute for the annual town meeting discussions. It takes a lot of planning. We were extremely fortunate with our August annual last year and our October special, everything, October special, everything went extremely well. But I don't see the select board deciding what articles they want on the warrant, discussing them, voting to put them in, the budget. If that can be done by May 4th, May 22nd outdoors is viable. I personally believe the weather is going to be colder, cooler, nastier than October. That's my personal opinion. But to make May 22nd work, you would need to sign the warrant, May 4th.
Just, just remind us, Robert, on the, the number of days before the town meeting that the warrant needs to be done, though, isn't it a week?
The warrant needs to be posted more, 14 days or longer.
14 days, okay.
14 days it needs to be posted. You meet on Tuesdays. You meet every other Tuesday.
But it doesn't mean that we can't have special meetings.
Correct, but the May 4th meeting actually works in this case.
But, but we can, we can, we're very flexible and we can, we can that work if thinking is for the, for May 22nd.
Yeah. I, I just want to clarify, I just want to clarify something. My, my point is, we're not ready, we're not ready for the early May date, is my point. We haven't, you know, gotten that far, but I don't see why we couldn't get ourselves ready for a date in May that makes some sense. And if, if you know, that might be the only weekend in May that does make any sense.
Is there a deadline for the articles? Have you decided yet about that, or? You know, because if there was a deadline for the articles for May 4th, there's got to be a deadline soon for our next chosen date. I mean, we have to, we have to get some articles on this warrant. And, and people put articles on the warrant, have to prepare those.
Okay.
So, I mean.
So let me, let me look at the calendar and see, 14 days and plus, we'll probably need them at least 14 days in advance of, of that for people to submit, for them to be considered. Robert?
Um, we're at the end of March. You have two meetings in April, and then you have to sign the warrant on May 4th. If and only if you want the annual town meeting. It being a super nasty weekend, hypothetically, that Saturday and Sunday, then you're not going to go next weekend to Memorial Day, and that's going to kick us into June. So I empathize totally with Lucy, and I've always enjoyed working together with her. I see June 14th as a, not for her, as a comfortable date to get this annual town meeting done, to get the word out, to, to, to discuss the articles, to have public information sessions about all the articles, especially the new bylaws. So to do it right, I'm not looking for an alley you pass here.
So you, you said June 14th, you didn't.
June 14th is a Monday.
Yeah. Okay. So you meant, you meant what, June 12th? We go back to that, okay.
Yeah, June 12th. That, to me, is comfortable. It, you know, our bylaw states Tuesday, the first Tuesday in May, two weeks following for the election. So that's been changed anyway, and my philosophy and experience and practice is to do it right. Like we did last year. Last year, we were pioneers. Hardly anybody was doing an annual meeting, and we did it, we pulled it off, albeit in August. Now we've learned a lot, we know what we can do, but I, I don't see us getting that warrant out that first Tuesday to sign in May.
So, I just want
We have to think back to what is in the best interest of everyone. And then to the, for the good of the order, and what I'm hearing is that those, the May 4th date is probably too early to have all of this together. So the, the next option in my mind would be the May 29th date or the June 12th.
Well, May 29th is Memorial Day weekend, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, not that. May 22nd, I'm sorry. May 22nd or June 30th, or June 12th.
So if it were June 12th, then what does that mean for the election and the early voting time, then?
Well, then it would have to be the 22nd
Of June.
Well, yeah, 22nd. And we have the option to choose early in-person voting, which we're not going to do. We're going to do early mail-in voting. So, but we're going to, after tonight, put a a press release out on the Southampton community page, if that's okay with you, Tammy. We're going to state all the facts of what people need to know about the meeting and the auction. I just want to, people to know for the record that I am not in favor of changing this at all, and and that it is not because of COVID reasons that this is being changed. So I just, you know.
We got it.
Robert, but I, I hope we can get voters to come, because it is a gradu- graduation month, wet month. And, you know, if we're passing a budget
Okay.
That has to be considered.
It, it is a COVID in that we cannot be indoors, so we have to find a suitable time to have it outdoors. Robert?
I, to answer Matt's generic question, the rules are, the select board votes and selects the date for the annual town meeting, special town meeting. Moderator determines whether or not it's safe, and that's kind of Lucy Goosey, what it is, but you, the select board, control the date.
Thank you.
Yes, the select board does control the date.
So Ed, do you think we can have a warrant ready for May 4th and keep a date for May 22nd, or from your point of view, what you know is coming up for issues, is that too early?
I think, especially with the ambiguity around the American Rescue Act and how we can use that, I think shooting for May 22nd would be extremely tight. I think that June 12th would definitely be doable. And we'd have a much clearer picture as far as that goes, and be able to do a much a much clearer budget.
Now, that's, 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 that's an interesting point.
In terms of our revenue?
Yeah. If we have it by then, yes, that would be very good.
And June, June 5th was what? That's graduation, Hampshire? Graduation?
Yes. And the newer school, they have their graduation in the middle of the week, not on the weekend.
Okay.
And they don't know what date, as of a couple of days when I called, they don't know what date, but I just want to make sure we were giving them equal shakes.
Okay.
So this, this revenue thing, like, we don't know where the revenue is shaking out because, because of COVID and all the spending and all the money incoming and everything, is that, is that
Ed presented earlier that Southampton is earmarked to get potentially 1.8 million dollars.
I heard that, yes.
Okay. How that plays out and how we can utilize it, the rules are yet to be released. So there could be some impact to our budget.
Oh, because, yes, got it, because, okay, because we could use some of that for next year's budget. I, I just want to say, and I constantly say this, like, I mean, we're not using non-consistent I, I, I would never vote for something to use any of these funds to, to say to prop up operational items, because, unless these things are going to be a steady stream till infinity and beyond. Sorry, the pun, but, I mean, 1.8 million sounds like a ton of money. I hope that it's kind of free-floating and we're able to use it for kind of whatever we see fit, because I wouldn't be able to support using this to support operational items. I mean, because it, it's a resource that would run out, and then we're suddenly going to be beholden to the operational item that we established. I mean, I could think of a number of things we could use this on.
But understandably, if we have to make some, some ventilation corrections.
Capital, yes. I can think of a number of capital things, yes. I'm totally with you on that, Francine, with school and any of the buildings, on any of the buildings.
We need, we need to take it, as much as we can. And that frees up other money and capital for other things. So unless and until we know that, we are not going to put a whole picture together.
Yeah, and then once we vote on our budget and all of these items, then that ship has sailed for this year, where it's otherwise indicated that we could spend this money.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so with that, we exhausted this discussion. I'm ready for, to hear a motion, and we can.
What, what was the date, what was the dates that were outlined? Like now, Lucy, I hate to say this, but like, with that, with that particular part of the puzzle here, it's kind of sways me back a little bit here, because more, the more time does help our budget scenario, and we, we consistently always have a budget problem. And every little bit helps.
Okay, I thought the two dates on the table were May 22nd in lieu of May 4th, May 22nd and June 12th.
Okay.
So that we have a.
Did, did, Ed, did you answer, would you be able to have the articles ready by May 22nd? But you'd have to vote on them on May, whatever, like, yeah, look at, May 4th.
Right, but the, to me, the biggest article is the budget article.
Budget, yeah.
And with the ambiguity about how we are able to, or what the rules and regulations are on how we'll be able to utilize that American Rescue Act funds, I think we're at a disadvantage.
Okay.
I, I move for a June 12th town meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion?
Just what, the rain date would be the 13th, then?
Yes.
Yeah, you can add that to the motion.
Okay. All right, hearing no more comments.
Francine, so I'm going to, I'm going to just put something out tomorrow on the community page, and I will let people know the date of the election, and I'll let the candidates know that nomination papers still have to be in on March 30th. There is no change. I checked with elections, there is absolutely no change as to when, even if the, the election is moved, the nomination papers still have to be in on March 30th.
March 30th, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of June 12th?
Falsi.
All right, Tishmanai, so that date is set. Then we move on to the next date that's contingent on this, and that's the date of the election. I heard what Lucy said about the fact that regardless of how, how much time we extend this, this, this election date forward, that the nomination papers still have to be in on, on March 30th. So with June 12th being the date, we could do it the following, or the 13th, we could do it the following Tuesday.
It has to be the 22nd.
It would have to be June 22nd.
Well, it's, yeah, two, uh, yeah, two weeks after, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that, that, it's, and we're just bumping everything back a month.
Tammy, Tammy, Tammy raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy? Please.
She's muted.
Okay.
She'd be able to unmute herself.
Yeah, she did.
The phone's ringing now. Sorry. Okay, I have several, or, okay, so the election date is now going to be June twenty second. Does that mean that elected people in spots that were empty are going to stay empty a whole nother month and people are going to have to stay on their positions for a whole nother month?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's that then, thank you. We, as a town, voted to change the bylaw to be May fourth. Can we please get back on that schedule? We have a finance committee. I know we had press dates last year, but we pushed everything off so far last year. And now we're starting to do it again. We are supposed to have everything done by May fourth and at the, those, that is when the town reports would be produced.
Yes.
And in August, we didn't even, we, we didn't have them at that meeting.
We don't bring them to the meeting anymore because we only get seventy of them.
Okay. Well.
Okay.
That's, that's my, my piece on that.
You make an important, regardless, Tammy, you make, you make an important point. And, 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 you know, all the way up until the end of this, I agreed with you a, a, and agreed with Lucy and the whole thing. But, but the, the important information that was passed here for me that, that swayed me is not necessarily, I, I think, could we be ready for May fourth? I think if we're being real with ourselves, I think we are pushing on that deadline. So I hear you loud and clear there that even if none of this were happening, I think it'd probably struggle to hit that deadline. So appreciate the constructive feedback. I think it's true. I think we do need to get better there. I think we are way better than we were last year, just.
Oh, yes. Definitely agree. Especially having a finance committee now.
Yes, I mean, we're miles ahead of where we were last year, but we're still not all the way there. But if, if we're being honest with ourselves, but, but for me, the, the, the thing that, the thing that moved me is, is that, that if, if we are going to be awarded that amount of money and it is able to be spent in four consecutive fiscal years, starting next year, we'd be doing ourselves a disservice not to try to figure out a way to start spending that money in year. I mean, that's a lot of money for our town. Like, we're gonna, I think we're going to struggle to find ways to spend it, given how pigeonholed it will probably be. And it's better to have four years than three years to figure it out. And, and so for me, I'm just telling you what my feelings were on the matter. Like, I'd love to stick to the timeline. I see no other reason not to, but that was the one thing. And money, we need money in this town. We need investment in this town. We need all of those things. Like, that's the thing that causes me to push it. But, but I hear you because I think in a vacuum, you're right, we, we still are a little bit, we're dragging a little bit behind here. So we got to admit that to ourselves.
We are.
Francine, so with, one more comment. Sorry, one more comment. Can the select board push a little bit to get a deadline for when the articles need to be, get put on the warrant? So that people out there that want to get articles out on the warrant will have a deadline to be able to write them up and submit them to the select board?
What if we, so if we're going with the twelfth, why not do? I mean, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday that we have a meeting. We can always schedule another meeting in between. I'm looking at maybe May fourth or May eleventh. How does, how does everybody else feel?
May fourth would probably work. And then if anything has to be reviewed by town council, it gives us some time.
Okay.
To get warrant articles drafted? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Drafted it in for us to review and, and recommend for inclusion in the, in the, in the warrant. And then if they need to go to council, there's time for council. Robert?
With May fourth as your deadline.
Yes.
We need to sign the warrant in fourteen days or two weeks from that May fourth, May eighth. So it gives you two weeks.
That's fine.
Plenty of time.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good. So then, then the drop dead date then for us to sign it would be the eighteenth.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, all right, we did a work.
Go back, let me go.
The twenty fifth, no.
No.
Twenty fifth, yeah.
Twenty fifth.
If I'm saying it correctly, the drop date signing would be May twenty fifth.
Okay.
But normally, meeting schedule, May eighteenth.
Okay, that's fine.
So you have a, on May eighteenth, whoops, it's midnight, we're not done. You can meet the next week as you've done.
May, may, May twenty fifth.
Let's do May fourth, like, like, we, we can afford to do something in advance for once.
Right.
Let's, let's do that.
Well, that's, that's with the deadline being May fourth. It's for us to, to, you know, vote on them, the eleventh or the eighteenth.
I know.
We're good.
We just have to, but we have to post the warrants on, uh, May twenty ninth.
May twenty eighth, Friday.
Twenty eighth, twenty eighth, yep, sorry.
No later than.
I'm looking at my calendar wrong date.
Be work.
All right, now, the fact that we did, we, we voted on the election day and on the, and on the annual town meeting date.
You did.
We don't need.
You didn't take a vote on the election.
All right, so I need a motion for the election on Tuesday, June twenty second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
Just a clarification from Lucy. You mentioned about early voting. What, what did you say there? We're not doing in-person early voting, you don't think?
Um, so we have the option to choose early, in-person early voting. And since our building is closed, we're going to offer, and I'll explain that in my last tomorrow. You know, mail-in early voting. So I have to write up the whole procedure of how it works, but people are going to be able to get their ballots mailed to them. They're going to say early absentee ballot on them. And because it's a local election, it's, you know, not the presidential. So we feel, you know, we got a big turnout for the mail-in, so we're going to offer that.
Okay. So with that explanation, do we have a vote on June twenty second as election day? Okay. Everybody in favor, we're good.
All and I.
Yeah, foul's eye.
Dan Tishman, I, all right. Okay, so that, that, that part's that. I hope someone was taking very good notes. A lot of dates around there, okay? My paper looks like chicken scratch. All right, the next item that we have to, is related to this. And this has to do with Governor Baker signing H seventy-three and act to further providing for early voting by mail. So I'm going to read you what it says. And then they're asking that each, each town or city adopt it so that we can conform with what the state has enacted. All right, the, the providing for early voting by mail restores and extends the special provisions to grant towns and cities the flexibility in administering municipal elections resulting from COVID nineteen. And it extends early voting by mail from March thirty first to June thirtieth. So the fact that we're having our election on June twenty second, you know, is, is well within, within the deadline that, that they proposed. So in support of the early voting by mail, now this came from, language it came that we got from our attorneys who clipped it from the H seventy-three law. In support of the early voting by mail, the select board will take a vote tonight to, A, provide for early in-person voting on or before June thirtieth. Between, okay. B, postpone the caucus or election currently scheduled to be held before June thirty to as late as August first. C, eliminate the caucus currently scheduled to be held before July thirty first and provide for the nomination of candidates instead of by submission of nomin- instead by submission of nomination papers with the signatures of ten registered voters. So that is in essence, very similar to what we did last year, except the dates have changed. All right. So any, any questions about it?
So haven't most people gotten the majority of their signatures? They only have to get ten instead of the thirty or something?
Because of the act that just passed, yeah.
It just passed.
Yeah.
Didn't know that, yes. So the people who got thirty-two are ahead, are ahead of the game.
And, and it's, it's good to get more than ten because, you know, sometimes there are nomination papers with a person that's not a registered voter on there. And, you know, we have to not accept that signature. So, and as far as the act, there is a line that says, which the election official decides it, it's optional if we want to have in-person early voting or only mail-in voting, so.
So we are opting, we are opting, the recommendation here is to not have early in-person, but early mail-in?
Yes, correct, yes.
Ed, any advice from our attorneys on this? Do we have to do this whole thing as it is?
No.
Can we customize it? Okay, all right. All right, then. If there's no more discussion, I'll take a motion to support early voting by mail.
Yax of twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Matt, Roland, I, second.
I second. All right, then all those in favor, one more time?
Foul's eye.
They said they both said it at the same time.
Roland, I.
Foul's eye.
All three unanimous, okay, thank you. Okay, only, I think one or two more things that we have to vote on.
Can I just say thank you?
We saved all the best for last, thank you. Thank you, Lucy.
Thanks.
Everybody, thanks for all of your input. I mean, it's, we, we need to consider all the different perspectives. I'm glad we came up with, I think was a reasonable compromise for everyone. So we work well together, thank you. All right, the next item to come up for discussion and for vote is something from the National Wildlife Federation. It's called the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. You had a whole description in your packet about it. They asked that we pledge to engage in at least three suggested activities from a list of thirty that they provided us that would help our community contribute to sustaining the monarch butterfly and, and all the other things, you know, in, in addition to that. So we, if we sign this pledge, we have to also identify three activities that contribute to sustaining the life, the life, the likelihood that there will be monarch butterflies in our, in our future. So Chris quickly reached out to several of the committees like CONCOM. And interestingly enough, they're already involved in continuing an invasive species removal program, which is one of the, one of the suggested activities. Because if they overtake, you know, the vegetation, and, and there isn't, there aren't, there isn't enough there to sustain the monarch butterfly, so that's a good thing. And it establishes a habitat for butterflies and for other pollinators. The Open Space Committee has as one of its annual goals to plant or maintain a monarch and pollinator-friendly demonstration garden. So that's, that's activity number two. And then finally, to host or through the Friends of Open Space, to create a community or project to enhance and promote pollination, conserv- pollinator conservation, or to host and support a native seed or plant cell as a giveaway or a swap. So we have, we need three, we have four proposed here that I think these, these committees or these groups have already committed themselves to. So Chris, you want to add to that?
Just, just one little caveat. CONCOM is definitely already doing the invasive species removal. That's definitely one of their main, main goals. Like you say, to provide enough good habitat for not only the monarchs, but pollinators in general. And last year, Open Space had been talking about doing a possible pollinator garden over on the new watershed, the Palm Ridge Meadow property, just taking a little, a little area of it, not the entire field there, but a corner of it, and starting a pollinator garden as a, as a demonstration. So I think they would be committed to doing that again. The Friends of Open Space I've reached out to with the idea of either some sort of a community art project, sort of a education-type project, or possibly doing some sort of a native plant seed swap, which were two choices on there that came to mind that didn't seem too difficult to pull off, but I have not heard back from the Friends of Open Space yet. So I'm guessing what I would sort of recommend, I think we can do this. I mean, there, there's twenty-seven more ideas on the, on the list, but these are the ones that, two of which are, are pretty definite as far as I'm concerned. So to come up with a third one, I don't think is too difficult. And Parks Commission may also be wanted, may also want to be involved, I'm not sure. But if it's possible, if we could take a vote to sign the pledge as the town of Southampton, pending confirmation from these three committees, but it's got to be in by the thirty-first. So I would commit myself to tracking everybody down and getting a, a written okay or something from the chairs of those committees, if that's what it would take.
Okay. All right, so is the, I, I agree, Chris, is there a motion contingent upon the agreement of these three committees to either continue or to initiate these, the, the activities that, you know, fit the requirements of our pledge so that we can, our word is good?
Yeah, and just, just a question, would that have to be signed? I didn't notice it particularly. Was that signed by all of the select board or by the town administrator?
I'll have to look what these.
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
I have it in front of me, it's, I.
It might be easier to make a motion to have the town administrator sign on our behalf, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just to be clear on the motion.
It asks for the mayor's mailing address, so I'm sure it would be.
The chair of the select.
So the chair of the select board would be the person to sign it.
Okay, all right.
Okay, am I right, Ed?
It sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so I will.
We can put a caveat in the chair of the select board or her designee, how's that?
Okay. All right, so let me try something as a motion. So I move that the town of Southampton agreed to support the so-called Mayor's Monarch Pledge by delegating the, or by, yeah, delegating the chair of the select board or her designee to do that signing before March thirty first. And it will be contingent upon the approval of the three named committees.
Okay, do we have, that's a very, you did a great job, Chris. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? Okay, with that, all in favor?
Go, Matt.
Roland, I.
Foul's eye.
Tishman, I. Okay. National Wildlife, here we come, great.
Yeah.
Okay, the, I think we only have one more item to, to vote on and that would be our minutes from November seventeenth of twenty twenty and February twenty-third of twenty twenty-one. They were in our packets, if you've had a chance to review them.
Yep.
Okay, any comments?
I just had one correction on the, the second set of minutes, the February one, I believe, when we had the historical commission with us and when we did the building envelope study. It's on second page, I think it's right at the end of the historical commission where we formed the working group. Doric Dodds is another person that is on that committee, therefore.
Okay.
Christina Madsen, Ian Illingsworth, myself, and Doric Dodds. As a working group. As a working group.
Where's that?
Under the, uh, sort of toward the bottom of the second page, at the end of the historical part where we named the working group for the envelope study. We're just missing Doric's name in there.
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, it's, um, uh, it's right before the, is it Open Space Committee, another headline down there at the bottom?
Well, it's just from the quarterly report.
Right above, right above that, yeah. Where it names the working, working committee.
Okay, so add Doric Dodds to it.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Gotcha, okay, so with that one correction, any other comments? All right, and about a motion to approve the minutes of November seventeen, twenty twenty, and February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Roland, I.
Falls I.
Tishman I. Good, okay, so, oh, we caught up with ourselves, that's great. Um, just, Ed already announced, um, our next meeting will be April sixth, and then again April twentieth, our next two scheduled meetings, okay, we're now at a point of, uh, open time for the public.
Francine?
Yes.
Oh, never mind, I'm good, never mind, just thought of something, I'm fine.
Right, so we're at the point of open time for the public, um, I was gonna read the whole thing, but we've gone on quite a while, so I'm gonna skip it, invite people to comment. Anyone?
I just have one little comment announcement, uh, I meant to do it earlier, um, a couple meetings ago, I think I announced the community art project that was organized, is being organized through the church. Um, those that have participated in making their little art tiles and have turned them back in, uh, to the, uh, to the church collection point, uh, just to let you know that the intent is to get those all assembled into some large paper quilt, if you call it that, um, and, uh, hopefully we'll have quite a few returned and have a quilt that will be assembled sometime, uh, this week for display, hopefully on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, and we're looking at probably um, attaching it somehow to the front doors of the church facing College Highway, but we would encourage anybody, not only those that may have contributed their little artwork, but, um, anybody to stop by and take a look, but I, I will let you know for sure when it's assembled, shall we say, but that's the goal, is to get it up sometime on Saturday, weather permitting. And maybe we'll put it up on the following weekend too, I'm not sure, but at least, at least then, so thanks for everybody who will have participated. We're looking forward to seeing what it looks like.
Okay, thank you, Chris, anybody, Tammy?
Uh, Tammy, I'm on Luminus two ninety-eight, College Highway, I just want to let people know, um, that on March thirtieth, there's gonna be information going out about Celebrate Southampton. Um, so please, um, take, look for that information, um, we'll be doing a Zoom meeting to start conversations going about that, um, we've got a band already booked for the Friday night, and the pavilion booked for the next day, and we will be outside enjoying life. The other thing I wanna say is, um, as Southampton Historical Society President, I greatly appreciate the people that have been looking out for the Clark Chapman House, um, we've had people, um, call in and report stuff, and it's been very helpful and very, um, meaningful for us to know that everybody's looking out for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm, I'm sorry, things are happening, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Tammy, just re- just reiterate the dates for Celebrate Southampton, please?
Yes, um, August thirteenth, Friday night, and then August fourteenth. Um, fourteenth is the Saturday, and that will be, um, picnic with some other activities.
Okay, good, good.
Um, I don't have any of the, um, the, uh, what is it, the meeting ID or passcode or any of that yet, so you'll have to look for that stuff, it'll come out in emails and on Facebook.
Okay, all right.
And Tammy, Tammy just reminded me of one thing I should have put in my town administrator's report. Uh, and that's, uh, actually last year, and I can't remember if it was during, uh, one of the September, uh, wind gusts, or, uh, if it was a little later than that, but, uh, during one of those windstorms towards the end of summer, beginning of fall, um, the power to the pavilion, half of it was lost. Uh, so, towards the end of the year, uh, the Parks Commission was making things work with some extension cords and what have you, uh, Mark Reed had made me, uh, actually, uh, aware of it, and the fact that he was having, uh, you know, he, he had called into Eversource to have him take a look at it. The power there comes actually all the way off, uh, from, uh, East Street, but he had made me aware of it, and I told him, okay, well, if you, if you can't get Eversource through putting in your work ticket to figure it out, let me know, and I'll reach out to our, uh, Eversource rep, so, a couple weeks ago, Mark Reed reached out to me, because it's becoming the season when people look to rent the pavilion again, and said, hey, uh, we haven't gotten, been able to get anywhere with that work ticket I had filled out with Eversource, we keep getting the runaround, uh, would you please reach out to your Eversource rep, so I reached out to Joe Mitchell, uh, and Joe was great. Mark had given me the ticket number, I had Mark's contact information, so, I gave, uh, Joe Mitch- Mitchell the information, and probably within ten days or so, uh, there was a crew there last Friday. Uh, they, they found out that, um, it was actually a, a problem in one of the handholds uh, out by the pole, so, they had to do some excavation, they had to, uh, replace the handhold uh, for, for the wiring, but Eversource is responsible for, uh, the wiring from the street all the way to the, uh, the meter, uh, so, they got an excavator out there, Eversource worked on it. Everything's back and working, didn't cost the town a dime, so, we'll have electricity, full electricity again this year.
That's right.
Thank you, that is greatly appreciated. Our last Historical Society meeting that we held outside in September was in the dark. Bring spotlights and flashlights.
Well, well, you're a Historical Society, aren't you supposed to bring candles?
Wasn't allowed to.
Not without a permit from the private apartment.
Thank you, that, Ed, that's wonderful news for us, thank you so much.
Hi, you're welcome.
Is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Tammy, and, and, and Lucy and Robert. Um, Ed, is there any correspondence that we need to hear about?
Nothing I've received.
Okay, we have no executive session scheduled. So that brings us to our final item, so I'm sure I can get some of the volunteer to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And a second, okay, so this means, thank you all for coming, we will conclude this meeting, it's eight nineteen PM.
We'll vote on it.
You need to vote, you have to vote.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I forget, I'm sorry, I think it's over.
Falls I.
Tishman I.
All right.
Okay.
Everyone.
Thanks, Francine, good night, everybody.